Good evening. And welcome to the work session business meeting of the Board of Education, February 13, 2025. We are going to start with a pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are reconvening our business meeting. We convened at six o'clock and had an executive session. We adjourned the executive session and are reconvening. The first item on the agenda is public comment on listed agenda items. I know one of the agenda items is the facilities project. So if there's anybody in the audience that would like to comment now, I'm opening up for public comment.
Good evening, everybody.
I'm sorry, please say your name.
My name is Rashad Gargiello Tissado, and I am a mom of four wonderful children in two buildings in this district. I just want to comment on the bond vote. I have the extreme opportunity to be a part of the committee that went into the work on this. There were many stakeholders, various parents from different age groups, community members, retirees, working people. We worked with the district. We had a clear agenda of walking through each of the buildings, seeing all the issues, talking about it, healthy debate. There was a lot of information that was given to us, and we were able to then kind of come together as a group, decide which were the projects that needed to be done, and gave our advice. That being said, we were very disheartened by the amount of disinformation that went around about the bond vote. I feel personally that there's so much here that was open and that was fluent, and that people had the opportunity to get that information out there. I'm hopeful that people will then come to the district, join the committee, and be able to have a conversation about these projects, which are very important. Because whether or not we like it, the roof needs to be replaced, boilers need to be fixed, and that has to happen. And whether we have a bond or whether or not it comes out of our tax pay money, excuse me, it still needs to happen. So I feel like it'd be a perfect opportunity for us to get together as a community, have conversations, and really deep dive into this project. I feel like it's very important, and I feel like it's very important for us to get true information out there. And I always say, if you have a question or if you have a doubt, you can reach out, you can email our superintendent, you can email with the administrators in the buildings, and they're a perfect source of information. That's all I have to say. And I want to appreciate all the work that was done with the committee, not just the committee members, but members of the district, who really, really strove hard to make this a really good opportunity for us. And I feel like together, as a community, we can make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Rashad.
My name is Sharice Green, and I'm new. I've only been in this community for two years. I have a daughter in first grade here, and I have a son at Valley Daycare. And I had the privilege and honor of teaching a workshop today at the high school with these two lovely women. And I have felt so welcomed by Putnam Valley as a newcomer, and I feel really honored to be a part of this community. And so when this capital project didn't pass, I was shocked. It is in direct opposition to all of the conversations and the dialogue that I have had with this community. Everything from educators to the people who are leading my children's sports, to St. Luke's, where one of my kids went, to Valley Daycare, to the people at the deli that I'm friends with. It's just shocking to me. And I really hope that this comes back to the table. Because as a new member of this community, I can say with confidence that my philosophy that a community, I think, can really be sort of determined by the way we treat our children and the elderly. And this is a community that I feel like really honors that in a beautiful way. And this is such a gross exception to that experience here that I really think we need to reevaluate this. I think that, as was said, a lot of misinformation was passed around the community, and there's great confusion about what this actually means. In talking to neighbors and friends, people on both sides of the line, I can tell that everyone's on a completely different page about the consequences of this. And folks aren't understanding that the wall is going to crumble and needs to be replaced, the roof is going to fall in eventually and needs to be replaced, and that in turning down this bond, that essentially we're turning down the opportunity to get money from our state, it's going to come out of our taxes. Obviously, that's going to impact our children's lives, and it's going to impact the lives of elderly folks who've lived here for generations, whose homes they've built and nurtured over time, and those homes are going to depreciate in value as a result of our school scores going down. We moved here for the schools. We know that the teachers and the leaders, the administrators in this school district are tip-top extraordinary humans. So I just feel devastated that I feel like the local economy is going to suffer as houses depreciate. Obviously, education is going to suffer if class sizes need to diminish and children's programming needs to be cut. And generations of folks who've lived here, who I've had the honor of calling now my neighbors and friends, are going to lose value in their actual property as Garrison students stop coming here, stop paying to come here, stop giving us money that we need in order to support the education that I think so many of us live here for. So I'm just here to ask that we can reconsider, that we find a way to educate the community perhaps differently. I know so many people who want to stand up and make that happen, and I'm so grateful for those of you who've worked on this bond and who have been tireless in its execution. And I just hope that we can take a fresh look and start over in some way.
Thank you, Sharice.
Thank you.
And I'm sure there are people who don't want to hear a thing I have to say, but that's fine. I just want to urge the board to not necessarily reevaluate, but to reinvigorate the effort for putting the bond up again. If it needs to be slightly altered, one or two things need to come out of it, I think that's fine, too. However, I do think that the bond did have primarily nuts-and-bolt stuff in it. And, you know, there were some people very vocal about the nurses' stations needing to be done and then still voting no. I think there are many, many opportunities to get the word out in a better way, a stronger way, a more comprehensive way. I just want the board to feel empowered and not discouraged, even though I'm disappointed in what the vote was. I do think that in a May or other time period, it would be a more positive outlook. And I do think, as was mentioned, kind of the hair-triggered no vote, thinking it's going to save taxes for taxpayers, I think is misguided in many ways. I'm not trying to be demeaning in any way, just that when you look at the way that the bond is structured and the timing of the bond based on expiring debt, with that opportunity to not raise taxes, at the same time getting very important work done for our students, it maintains the integrity of all of our programs in that way. Whereas if it has to come out of operating funds, it does then eat into operating funds that are meant for education and other really important things that happen for students every day. And people out in the community will say, well, you're, you know, you're holding teachers' jobs and students hostage. That's not, I don't believe that's the case. I believe that it's a fact of life that if a boiler fails, a roof fails, a wall fails, things need to be repaired, we have to pay for it regardless. You know, there are many ways that quickly a district can lose ground in advancing. And I think Putnam Valley is on a great track, and I wouldn't want to see that diminished.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay, then we're going to move, we're going to change some things around, but we are first going to move to the consent agenda. So, Mr. O., could you, number one, please?
Yes. We've resolved to approve the consent agenda items two through 10 as presented to the board at this meeting.
Second. The consent agenda includes the following items: approving the prior meeting minutes, approving an amended substitute listing, approving various contracts, approving mid-year in-service and graduate credits, approving, amending additional or unpaid work hours for staff members, approving an overnight trip for the high school science research students to Albany at the end of February, approving athletic team mergers that include girls' swimming, will be included with Maia Pack and Carmel, boys' swimming, Lakeland Panis, boys' hockey varsity, Lakeland Panis, Haldane and Head Hud, boys' hockey modified, Lakeland Panis, girls' hockey varsity, Brewster, Briar Cliff, Byram Hills, Carmel, Fox Lane, Haldane, Horace Greeley, John J. Cross River, Lakeland, Maia Pack, North Salem, Falling, Pleasantville and West Lake, and also remending an appointment, we're increasing the hours of a bus driver by 30 minutes, and we're approving CSC/CPSC placements tonight.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
I have a comment or a question regarding the service and graduate credit. And I don't know if it's towards Jackie or Dr. Luff. So there's quite a few credits, and I'm all for education, so I'm glad to see our teachers getting further educated. I'm curious, the approval process for these courses, as well as how can we ensure that what they're learning comes back into the classrooms to benefit our children?
For the approver, go for it.
Okay. So we have trusted resources that we go to, including teacher center programs. We've eliminated a lot of service providers that were not necessarily easy to vet and easy to trust in their, the credibility of the programs they offer. So our teachers take programs through teacher center programs. These are grant-funded programs paid for through a grant that provides opportunities for teachers to work with teachers and other consultants and vendors to offer these courses. These teachers and vendors go through a rigorous process with their teacher center director, which I used to be one, so I understand the process of vetting these consultants and these teachers who provide these courses. So through working with our local teacher centers, we can trust the credibility and the quality of the programs that are being provided, more so than these general programs that can be out there. Sometimes they're online, sometimes they're not very detailed in their syllabi. I asked to see the syllabi for a lot of these courses before approving them, especially if something seems particularly large in number of hours and offerings, but not very meaty in its description. So I asked to see more detail. Teachers can verify, I've gone to them and said, I think I need to see a detailed list, or can you put me in touch with this teacher or consultant so I can see the modules that they're creating? I even joined some of these classes. I'm actually looking at a class right now that one of our own teachers is offering, mostly for the content, because it's great content about building relationships with stakeholders. So the process starts with me. Teachers will find a workshop, usually in our BOSI's or teacher center catalogs. They will submit for approval. It starts with me. I do that close inspection of the course they're asking for, and then I pass it on for approval through the principal, who can then verify that this is something that aligns with building and district goals as well. Also, the teacher taking the course and whether or not this is a great opportunity for them. They approve it, and the teacher engages in the course. Now, to answer your question about whether or not these opportunities or the learning happens in the classroom for teachers, I would say that depending on the coursework, it's easy to see in observations whether or not a teacher is employing effective cell practices, whether or not a teacher is asking better questions in their lesson delivery. So those are the ways in which we can see if this is actually being applied, which is one of the levels of Thomas Guskies Evaluating Standards for whether or not a professional development is quality. The first level is the teacher survey. Oh, these are great workshops, you know, I had a great time, yeah, I learned a lot, the teacher was wonderful, terrific. That's a survey, that's like your low level. The application piece, that level five, is where we in our observations, we in our interactions with our teachers through walkthroughs, we can see the application of what the teacher has taken in the coursework they've done. Does that help to answer?
It helps.
Sure, okay.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolutions pass. We are going to move to the reports, because I want to let the students give their report. So I'm going to ask them, welcome, students, we're glad to see you here. We need more chairs, obviously. We'll do that better next time.
So to start off, quarter two is officially over and has ended the first semester. The Science National Honor Society induction occurred a few weeks ago, inducting all of the new members, including sophomores, juniors, and seniors. There is a carnation fundraiser for Valentine's Day by the Make a Difference Club, that's tomorrow, and some of them are coming with singing telegrams from Temperamental, the a cappella group. The National Honor Society Winter Blood Drive is currently being rescheduled, as it was scheduled last Thursday on the snow day. And River DiMarco, a senior, had her artwork displayed out in the hallway, you can see it when you walk by, for the new Aspire painting.
Thank you.
We also have course selection beginning for the underclassmen, it just recently began. And tomorrow is the Student Spotlight Awards for any students who've demonstrated good character or positive actions. And congratulations to all our winter athletes for having very successful seasons.
Thank you.
Outstanding.
Okay, Dr. Luff, did they steal your thunder?
Great.
I'm going to talk about slightly different stuff. So yes, it was another exciting week here in Putnam Valley. It's becoming typical. So unfortunately, a Putnam Valley family lost their home located just across the street from the high school. I know one individual is a volunteer fire here in Putnam Valley. So we were quickly notified by the high school that the home is on fire. We knew that it would impact our school in terms of access to our building. They ended up tapping into the fire hydrant at the end of our driveway. And I just wanted to, one, send my condolences to the family for all that they have lost, as I know they lost a pet in the house as well. And I do want to commend our volunteer fire department, who quickly responded and really called in lots of mutual aid. There was fire departments from Maia Pack Falls, Yorktown Heights, Constance Village, I'm sure I'm leaving others out, Maia Pack was covering our firehouse. So there was really a significant turnout, Mohegan Lake was here. And to be able to keep that fire from spreading, especially to the neighboring homes at the same time, there was unfortunately a few injuries. In fact, one of our own staff members, who also serves as a volunteer fire department, had a medical episode and was taken to the hospital, as well as another firefighter. So we actually had two Putnam Valley volunteer firefighters that were taken to the hospital. My fear is, in the midst of sort of these heroic actions and a tremendous loss to a family that volunteers here in Putnam Valley, the focus quickly became about the brown water. So I know, I wish as much attention was paid to those families that were impacted by this, or the heroic firefighters who ran into the burning building as the brown water got the attention. But that's not something new to us here. What happens is anytime someone taps into that water service, which comes from the town of Yorktown, we actually purchase our water from the town of Yorktown, comes down Foothill Street. Anytime there is a huge increase in pressure, it stirs up sediment that's in that water. And that's exactly what happens. If they flush the fire hydrants, it happens. When we were testing, the sprinkler heads in the wellness center, it happened. And it doesn't only impact our school, but it impacts every household on that line. So every household up Foothill and including continuing up Strawberry was impacted by that rush of water that came out of the fire hydrant. The town of Yorktown quickly came and evaluated that water. They had received calls that evening from the households on that line. So they came, conducted the testing, and notified Mr. Spittle, who was immediately on the topic, that the water was in fact safe and safe to drink and safe to cook with. That being said, we still went out of our way to make bottled water available to students. We have a few water filling machines, like pull and spring machines. Those were moved to locations to make them more accessible to students, and announcements were made over the loudspeaker so that students knew that they had access to that water if they felt it was necessary, they wished to do so. The water has since cleared, as we knew it would, and returned back to its typical state, as it always does when that happens. So again, I wish more attention was paid to the owners of the house who lost their house and lost their pet, and to the heroic firefighters who rushed into the burning building. But the topic quickly became about the discolored water. The next exciting event here at the high school, as the district communicated on Tuesday, we unfortunately had a student from a neighboring school district board our BOSI's bus and return here to the high school. I want to commend the Putnam Valley students who immediately notified our security monitors that there was in fact a student who did not go to school here, who had just entered the building. Contact was immediately made with the student, administration was notified, our school resource officer was notified, and the situation, unfortunately, took a little bit longer to come to a conclusion that we would have hoped, just based upon the individual not cooperating. But I do want to again really commend especially not only just our monitors and our administration, but really our school resource officer. And the reason we have an active-duty police officer here on campus is for these exact situations. And I think he handled it with the utmost amount of professionalism. In debriefing with him, he made it very clear that there was three pieces of information he needed from this student. He wanted to know who you are, why you're here, and if you're a danger to anyone. And until he got the answers to those questions, he assumes the worst. And that's unfortunately, he had to intervene to get to a point where that student was able to de-escalate, answer the questions, and to the point where he was satisfied with the answers, student was searched, the car was searched, and ultimately, the student was escorted off campus. What started off as an innocent, I'm getting a ride home with my girlfriend, which was the intention all along, right, they weren't here to cause any trouble, quickly escalated based upon the behaviors of that student. So again, I think that the district and everyone here at the high school handled it with the utmost amount of professionalism, taking safety of staff and students into account. And ultimately, it was pretty quickly resolved, and we were able to move about our dismissal process. So that, again, that information was out there, so I just wanted to provide a little more context behind it. As for the capital project, I know that it's coming up in terms of a presentation. We did hold a facilities planning committee, and it was very well attended. We saw some new faces, we saw some members who have been on the committee from the very beginning. I thought we had a great conversation. It was really an opportunity just to debrief on what happened, what they're hearing, what they're hearing in the community. And they now await what the board decides regarding the future of any potential project. I think some of the themes that focused, that emerged throughout that process, where the wall still needs to be fixed, the driveway still needs to be paved, the roof still needs to stop leaking, and the elementary school still needs heat. So those things are never going to go away, and those issues remain. So ultimately, the community's going to have to, or the board's going to have to make a decision to either finance these things in-house, which will ultimately come at the expense of programs and staff, because there's no other way to pay for it, because we can't go over our tax cap, or to put the project back out for another vote. One of the most concerning things that emerged for me during the week was a phone call I had with the superintendent of Garrison. So for those who don't know, after many years of trying, Putnam Valley had reached the point where Garrison School District could no longer ignore the program, the facilities, and the instruction that we have to offer here in Putnam Valley, and began offering Putnam Valley as a school of choice. The first year, we ended up with two students, who then grew to three. The next year, we got 13 of 18. We have another 10 students minimum coming in, as well as we keep getting students that are transferring from other high schools. I can't emphasize this enough, those students come in, they cost us essentially zero. We don't pay for their transportation, we don't pay for their special education costs, we don't pay for, other than leasing them a laptop, we don't hire more teachers because they're here. But yet, they generate, next year, we anticipate them generating about $500,000 in revenue. So that's $500,000 we get from the school district in Garrison, and we expend zero in return. Garrison parents are concerned. They wanted to know why a facilities project that included no increase in taxes would be voted down by a community. They're asking about what their options are to change their school of choice. They pointed out that Haldane recently passed a 20-something million-dollar project. So Haldane is investing in their facilities to try to match ours, at the same time, we're voting down projects to maintain what we have. So I just want to emphasize, the entire community, if we begin to lose, so we're two years in, or three years in, and we're generating a half million dollars of revenue, that has the potential to be upwards of a million dollars of revenue that we're generating. If that million dollars goes away, because those students all go back to O'Neill or go back to Haldane, that million-dollar expense still exists. So that million dollars falls back onto our taxpayers to make up the difference. And that's, I think, an eye-opening outcome of what could happen if we allow our facilities to start, and if we start to lose the programs that enticed Garrison to offer Putnam Valley as a school of choice. So the other piece is, the work still needs to be done, right? Our highest priority, as determined by the facilities planning committee, is the retaining wall. So if the board makes a decision to not go out for a public vote, or if we go out for a public vote and it fails again, that wall has to be replaced. That wall costs approximately $500,000, is the quote we have for that wall. So if we have to spend $500,000 from our operating budget, that's multiple teaching positions, it's increased class sizes, it likely impacts programs, because that's the only way we can get that money. And once the retaining wall's replaced, now, if you've noticed, the potholes at the end of the driveway are pretty soon going to swallow a car, right? So the next year, we're going to have to invest another $500,000 out of our operating budget to pave as much of the driveway as we can with that money. And again, that money's going to come at the expense of staffing and programs and students. And that will just continue. If the boilers in the elementary school go, millions of dollars. Could you imagine what millions of dollars in cuts would be to our district? The worst part is, the $9.2 million of aid we were going to get back from the state, that $500,000 retaining wall costs us $500,000, we get $0 back. So we're actually losing money. The $500,000 in paving we do, we would get $0 of that back in aid. So we still have to do the projects, they're going to come at the expense of staffing and programs, and we're going to lose the opportunity to get money back from the state by doing it piecemeal. So those are all things that I would implore the board to consider when we make a decision regarding the future of that capital project. All right, moving on. So the next project that has also raised quite the attention of the community is, we have long planned the replacement of the high school turf. So that is scheduled to take place this summer. We are doing our best to schedule it in a manner that has the least impact on our student body. We've talked to architects, we've talked to construction managers, we've talked to the company that's going to do the work, and we've talked to many other school districts that have had the same type of work done. While our initial plan was to move the high school graduation off of the field, which is ironically what's happened the last two years anyway, that has certainly caused some concern amongst our families, and we're more than willing to problem-solve and to explore what those options and solutions are. So I know we have a meeting coming up after break with a group of parents, and it's really just an opportunity to problem-solve and brainstorm of what options exist. If we push back the turf replacement, we stand to lose a significant portion of our fall sports season, right? So we're sort of trading the impact on one group of students and pushing that impact onto another group of students. So we're doing our best to find a happy median, to find a way, it's got to be done, and to find a way, it takes so many weeks to get it done, we can't make it any shorter. So it's just a matter of where, when we start that work in terms of, and where it ends. So we're open for suggestions, and I know we have a group of parents coming in to meet with us, and I'll certainly consider anything that they have to bring to the table in terms of options. The Section 1 Executive Committee recently met, and I had the opportunity to attend the New York State Athletic Administrators Association luncheon, where they were graciously, gracious enough to recognize me with a distinguished service award for significant contributions to Section 1 athletics. So it was very nice. So it was very nice, and totally unwarranted, I would say, but it was a great reception, and it was a nice opportunity to catch up with some of my administrative colleagues. We had our high school aspire celebration. I actually don't think I've ever seen one as well-attended, and I know students already talk about it. River de Marco, it's probably the most intricate piece of art I've ever seen in my entire life. Every time you look at it, you see something new you didn't see the last time. So I couldn't be more impressed with the talent our students showcased, and that piece of work, I encourage everyone on their way out to take a look at it. It's hung on the wall right before you go out, on the left-hand side. Stop and take a look at the beautiful artwork that's there. And we did have our second snow day on February 6th, and just a quick reminder that there is no school next week for students, February 17th to 21st. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, wow. All right, so what we're going to do is do the first two new business items before we go to presentations. Okay, so...
You're saying a motion, that's not going to move us?
A motion.
Oh.
You don't want to do the presentations first?
Wait, no. So Jeanette made a motion to move the first two business action items.
Okay. Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, we'll begin. Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that Alyssa Hamelfar be granted tenure in the area of ESOL at the Putnam Valley Central School District, effective February 14, 2025, and, there it is.
Second.
Questions or comments? Tenure is a, it's a pretty amazing thing, because you then become a permanent member of our family. Alyssa has certainly demonstrated expertise and concern for students that is exemplary. So, this is a really big deal. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? The resolution granted? Thank you, Alyssa. Is she here?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Dr. Luft, did you tell her she has to make a speech?
You just scared her half to death.
Panic! I'm sorry. If they did that to me, I'm going to do it to you. Number two, please.
Resolved on the, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education hereby appoints Melissa Estrella as the Director of Pupil Personnel Services to serve a four-year probationary appointment in the tenure area of Director of Pupil Personnel Services, effective July 1, 2025, and through June 30, 2029, and authorize the superintendent of schools to enter into a salary agreement with Ms. Estrella. Ms. Estrella holds the following professional certifications: New York State School District Leader, Early Childhood B-2, Childhood Ed. 1-6, Students with Disabilities 1-6, and Students with Disabilities B-2.
Second.
Questions or comments?
So Melissa is no stranger to us here in Putnam Valley, and I couldn't be more proud of the number of colleagues that are here to support her this evening. So Melissa certainly has made a name for herself over the last, was it about six years? I don't know where you're over there, six years. Here in Putnam Valley, and I think just by the number, sheer number of people that are here this evening shows the impact that she has had on our school, our students, our staff. She certainly stood out amongst the candidates. We did a full search, we canvassed resumes, we did screening interviews, and at the end of the screening interviews, it was unanimous decision of the committee that we knew who the right person was for this position, and there was really no need to continue that process any further than we already had. So without doubt, I fully recommend Melissa to assume this role that will be vacated when Natalie retires, and I am very excited to work alongside her for the next, I have nine years, I don't know how many more you have.
Many years, many years.
I think you made a commitment to work here forever, so. And I do want to acknowledge that she's also joined here by, this evening, by her husband and her two beautiful children, who are here as well this evening, so, congratulations.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? The resolution passes. Welcome. Well, we just have to appoint somebody every meeting in order to get a nice crowd of people here. We'll have to plan better.
Watch how quickly the room empties now, though.
Yeah. No, I know. But congratulations to both. I know they have to get home and have young children. So I want to move back to our presentations, and the first one being the facilities planning committee update, so...
So this is what we already started talking about earlier during my board report. We sort of gave an update on the work that was done, but for the facilities planning committee that met earlier this week. And this is really just on here as an opportunity for board discussion to set the sort of direction in which the district hopes to go. I think there's really two options, is, two or three options would be, one would be to put the existing project back up, one would be to send the project back to the facilities planning committee and ask them to present a revised version of the project, and the last would be to simply do nothing, and we'll deal with the necessary repairs within our existing operating budget. So I'll really turn the floor over to you guys to decide the direction in which we should go.
Personally, I think it needs to be sent back to the facilities committee. They did a lot of work, and they need to look at how the public spoke at the vote, and, you know, come forward with a recommendation that will satisfy those individuals who felt, for whatever reason, that perhaps what we were asking was too much in some areas. We need a new roof. We need a new boiler. I was working in the district when the boiler at the elementary school went, and thank God it happened in the summer. There was a moon-sized crater in that parking lot for about two weeks while they removed the old boiler out and put the new boiler in. It took a lot of time, a lot of effort. God forbid that thing goes down in the middle of the winter. This is a necessary item. The roof on the high school is a necessary item. The work on that collapsing wall out there, and the lack of lights in the middle school property is a necessary item. These are health and safety and maintenance items. So we need to look at what's essential, what's necessary. Also, the nurse's office at the elementary school. Somebody should put a plaque out there on the office door, signifying its historic importance as it represents a nurse's office from the 1950s. We need to modernize that. Again, a health and safety issue. Those are four items that I feel very personally strong about, and, and I would like to bring the whole suggestion back to the facilities committee. We need these things. This is not frivolous, this is not nonsense, this is maintenance. You have a roof on your house for 20 years, you got to start thinking about replacing it. That roof has been on this thing for 25 years, and God forbid, how many, how many slabs of plywood got to be replaced because of the microscopic drips that occur over that time? It's got to be done, these things have to be done. So my strong opinion is bring it back to the facilities, and let's see what they, they have to say about it, Dr. Luft. That is my opinion. And, and I would, I would definitely, after their recommendation, then, because these are necessities, do another vote.
I agree with what, I'm sorry.
Go.
No, I, I agree with what Sam said, and I think it's definitely parts of the project that are necessities that we have to look at, that the facility committee has to review and bring us back some recommendations. But along with that, I also agree with a May vote. If we decide on going forward, this, that it needs to be at that timeframe and not wait another year, it needs to be sooner than later.
Yeah. So, first of all, I just want to thank every person, regardless of how they voted, who came out to vote. Thank you so much for casting your ballot. For those who were not able to be in town that day, who also got an absentee vote, thank you for going above and beyond and making sure that your voice was heard. I think that this is a time for us to sit back and listen to our community. Obviously, there were some, some concerns. I believe that some of those concerns were from perhaps some misguided information, some thoughts that perhaps people really thought were true. I don't believe that people intentionally want to spread disbelief or things that they don't believe are true. I think that misinformation and misperception are real, are people's realities. And so, I think that there is some work we need to do for communication purposes about these projects. I wholeheartedly support every piece of this project, and I'm very saddened that it didn't pass, but it not passing is only going to make us better as a community, and we are going to have to come together to figure out what it is that our community at this point is telling us. I also believe that there is a portion of our community that was not heard in the way they felt about this project, for the sheer fact that they just may not have been able to come out and vote that day or secure an absentee ballot. So, I agree with putting it back into the hands of the facilities committee to review, to ensure that the needs of our children are met. No parent, regardless of how they voted for this bond, wants their child to be in a school where the roof is going to collapse. None of us want our child to be in a parking lot where the wall could fall on either them or a vehicle at any time. We want our children to be safe. We need our children to be safe. That is the number-one priority. I am also a firm believer that we have to pay things forward, and that if our children are in this community and they are, are coming to our schools, I really do believe that our kids should have the very best resources possible. It's one of the reasons why I personally moved my family to Putnam Valley. I believe in what teachers do here, I believe in the way that our schools are run. We have top-notch schools. Our elementary school is in the third percentile of the country. That is no small feat. They are doing amazing work in these buildings, and I'm, I'm fortunate to have a child in every building right now, and I talk with my kids every single day about what's going on. I spoke to my daughter yesterday about the water. I spoke to my son about what he did at recess. I spoke to my little one, even my little one, about the fact that she learned about polar bears the other day. And so, they come and they tell me the truth, regardless of whether or not I want to hear it, they tell me the truth. And so, at the end of the day, this is about our kids, and at the end of the day, a community must stand together behind the vision for the community. And so one of the things that I did was, I asked people to share with me what went wrong here, because truly, I still don't understand. I think I'm starting to get a better understanding of it, and I want to share some of those highlights, because I said that I was going to. I think there's a very high level of frustration for the people who put the work in to be able to plan what this project was going to look like in the best interest of our children, and that level of frustration is there because we just don't understand why people can't get behind the vision of having great schools in our district with facilities that are really providing our kids with amazing opportunities. So, I, I want to share some of the insights from the community that I worked, that I was given. I do believe that some of those insights are incorrect information that they perhaps heard, and so I, I'd like that clarified if possible for our community, and I also want to share some of the innovative ideas that they had as far as communication. I do believe that a big part of the reason why this particular bond did not pass was just a result of the way in which it was communicated, or the way in which people received the communication or not. We do know that a big piece of this was the mailing. We understand that some people did not get that mailing, and for whatever reason that happened, we've got to do better with that, and most people that I spoke with agree that even for people who are not on social media, that mailing is really important, and making sure that graphics in the mailing are there so that it's quick information for people to understand, and that for elderly people that, you know, may have a vision problem, that there be a large font attached to it, that it not be the tiny little font. That was a big piece of, of things. I know that one of the things that we mentioned was yard signs, making sure that, you know, that we're just getting people in the know in different ways about the vote. I certainly spoke to people that have children in school that didn't necessarily know that the vote was happening, because people are busy, and they have jobs, and they have to go in and out of Putnam Valley early and come home late sometimes, and I get it, I'm a working mom of three, I get it. At the same time, I would implore people who want to be informed by the district to join our mailing list, please. If you don't want to miss a beat about what's happening here, please join the mailing list. There's a button on the website that you can use to do that. Certainly, if you have trouble doing that, you can call district office and they will help you. And there's a couple of other things that I could share, I don't want to take all the time tonight, and I will be sharing those pieces with Dr. Luft and the rest of the board. But there is a notion out there that I want to clarify, that people were chosen for the facilities committee. That is not true, and I just, Dr. Luft, if I say anything that's incorrect, please correct me. An email was sent to our community, to those who are on the email list serve that we use. If you've signed up to be on that email, you got that email, whether or not you're a parent in the community, to sign up for the facilities committee if you wanted to. I don't believe that anyone was rejected from the committee for any reason. All who wanted to come were welcome, and no one was cherry-picked, and there is no club. There is notion of this language of there being a club, where only certain people are allowed to be on these committees, that is absolutely the furthest thing from the truth, and I just want to make sure that that piece is out there, because I'm imploring our community to please, if you had issues with this bond, please join the facilities committee, so that we can hear your voice, so that you can be a part of it. If you have a vantage point that the committee has not yet heard, we want to hear it so it can be addressed. Thank you so very much.
I should have gone before Crystal.
Sorry.
She touched on so many things that I also wanted to talk about, but I think the most important thing is that the facilities meeting team, they, we really want to have taxpayers on it, people without children in the district, real community members, because if we don't have the people who don't necessarily agree with the capital project, we don't know how we can improve it to get people on board. So in the last meeting, we had somebody who voted no, and it was fantastic.
It was.
He was just really, we got great information from him about why he voted no, and I just want to implore everybody who, maybe not everybody, but a lot of people who voted no, to come out to the facilities, to join the mailing list and be a part of the team, so that when we put it out again, it's the people who may not have voted yes in the beginning have their voices heard. And another thing is, I do believe the district needs to work harder on getting the mailings out, and to getting the information out. I would agree with all that was said, I think more mailings would have been helpful instead of one, so I do hope that our district will consider sending more. And I think it should also be in May, because people are going to go out anyway for the budget, and I think it's really important that if we want voter turnout, that we do this in May.
I, I like your idea about inviting those who voted no, because that is a key, and a lot of those individuals that I've spoken to, and they understand the priorities that are necessary. They felt that this particular bond did not represent all that was required and necessary. There were add-ons, and I, I think that's important. Thank you. Thank you, Sasha.
Yeah. I, I want to just add one piece. For those, for those people who just love Putnam Valley and are really busy, I want to speak to that community, because I know what it's like to be really, really busy, and to not make the time to go vote on those days, because you think that somebody else is going to just vote yes, and it's going to be fine. Well, this time, it didn't go that way, and I would just really love to implore people to please do whatever you can do to get your voice heard. We're not telling you how to vote, we're just asking you to please utilize your voice for the community that you live in. I think that that's really important, again, no matter how you feel about the project. Please come out and vote, and if you cannot vote that day, there is a... I want to just add one piece. For those people who just love Putnam Valley and are really busy, I want to speak to that community because I know what it's like to be really, really busy. And to not make the time to go vote on those days because you think that somebody else is going to just vote yes and it's going to be fine. Well, this time, it didn't go that way. And I would just really love to implore people to please do whatever you can do to get your voice heard. We're not telling you how to vote. We're just asking you to please utilize your voice for the community that you live in. I think that that's really important. Again, no matter how you feel about the project, please come out and vote. And if you cannot vote that day, there is a solution that is now more widely available than ever before. All you have to do is call the district office and they will walk you through how to secure an absentee ballot. So please, please, make your voice heard. And I also want to thank those people who are on the facilities committee for all of the work that they did to be able to come up with the understanding of what we needed in this project. It was two years of work that I think really needs to be highlighted. There was a comment that why weren't there walkthroughs? To talk about what the needs were at each of the buildings. And I would like to say to the community that there were. The facilities committee went to every building and walked through each and everything item that was a possible consideration for the project. And they made decisions as a committee together to recommend to us as the school board. So I just want to say that that did happen. And again, if you would like to be a part of that work, to please join. Thank you so much. And I also want to give Jeannie Denike a shout out because she bore the brunt of a lot of the work that went on on the back scene of this project. And it was not in vain. We know that we will be able to figure this out in the future. And Jeannie, we just want you to know that we appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeannie.
My only comment. I'm a little concerned that a vote in May is three months away.
Ninety days.
We spent two years planning, with meeting with the facilities committee. I agree that we need to send it back to the facilities committee to look at the project again, make adjustments if they feel they need to or not make adjustments, bring it back to us. But it gives, I think, a fairly short window of time in terms of getting that committee together and having meetings because it's going to take more than one meeting.
Absolutely.
So I'm just, I'm concerned about the timing. I don't want to put it past the May vote. I think it's a good time to vote when people are already coming out to vote for the school budget. This is separate from the school budget. The school budget deals with our educational program. This is a facilities project. But we're still dealing with planning on the regular budget. And now we need to also be thinking of this one. I'm just concerned about the timing.
So valid concern. Certainly, the timing is very short. But I do agree that timing it with the school budget vote, which community members know and expect is upcoming at this point, while it ruins our timeline and will have implications to construction timelines and completion, at least it's an opportunity to vote on a project where people are aware that the vote is coming up. I do think there's a significant amount of community members who are thinking to themselves, shoot, I should have voted. I think it's been many years since we've had any proposition or budget voted down. And I think that the sense of it's expected to pass and somebody else will vote. And that's a lot of what I've heard. Is like, if I knew it was going to go down, I would have come out. I just expected it to pass. And I think that the opportunity to capitalize on those individuals who are now paying more attention than they were before, it makes sense. I think the committee, one, we already have a committee. To Crystal's point before, I hope more people join the committee. We have not turned away a single person from that committee. I do know there was people who were opposed to the project that were on the committee from the start, right? That's good. I mean, there's multiple perspectives and voices. And that should continue. I hope we get more people who want to know. I thought that the gentleman who came to the meeting the other night, I think he learned a lot when he was there. And I think he had information to share. We learned a lot from him. And I thought that's the perfect scenario. But I do think the committee is engaged. I think they're motivated. They're not starting from scratch, right? The work now is really to prioritize what we've already discussed. And I have no doubt that if that's the direction the board decides to go, that that committee will get the work done that needs to get done and present the projects back to the board in a timely manner.
Okay, so I don't want to put this off. I want to be able to give Dr. Luft direction tonight to reconvene the facilities committee.
Oh, yeah.
I think we're on agreement on that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, ninety days is a short window. And you're absolutely right, Barbara. It's a lot to do. But I think the committee knew what the project, you know, all the projects that were contained within that bond, they need to look at it. And again, personally, I got to stress, you do what is required to be done for maintenance and safety. That should be the bond and that is it on the bond. Anything else should be done in-house then. But that's up for the facilities committee to decide. We need to reconvene them. The minute the break is over, Dr. Luft, I would say that first week, we're back in. Bring them back again. And then let's move forward so that the people are aware of exactly what this bond is going to be at least two months prior to that vote. Sixty days from that vote. Our public, our community, needs to know exactly what it is, what it will cost, and the projects involved. I think that's really important, to give them enough time to disseminate, to ask you questions, ask us questions, whatever. But they need that. That's why it has to move quickly. And Barbara, I also am concerned, but I think we can do it.
Oh, I know we can, but I don't want to kind of like take our time and see.
No, 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 no.
Like I just, I think that.
Like I said, we know what was in the bond. We know it failed. There was an outcry and it lost. We need to correct that. We need to find out what is acceptable and what's not. That's why the facilities committee is going to be important.
I also just want to request that a part of the planning facility work be a public relations plan. How the plan is going to be communicated to the public.
But it needs to be, yeah.
And it needs to be done differently, right? Like different ways, as many approaches as possible so that, we've got a lot of different types of people that live in Putnam Valley and we should be doing all that we can to reach them all. And once we've done our due diligence with that, then it's the public's responsibility to be an engaged citizen and know what's happening in our schools. But I do think that there's room for improvement there. And I also believe that writing down a plan for future projects as to how we communicate our projects is a good idea to help us in the future.
Along, what time would we need to make a decision for it to be on the ballot in May?
Forty-five days.
Yeah.
Which is what day? Do we know?
That's what I'm saying. We.
Last year.
Well, the biggest complaint the community had is that they didn't have enough information. That's why, beginning tonight, we need to start saying, this is the direction we're going into. Facilities committee is going to come back with a recommendation. We will present it. And then, Crystal, you're absolutely right. The campaign needs to move forward. There should not be a single person in Putnam Valley that is not aware of the vote and what it entails. I feel very strongly about that.
Jeannie, did you get all that? We need to schedule a facilities planning committee, prepare our first mailer, and order yard signs.
By February twenty eighth.
Next week.
Oh, I have more.
I don't think the district can order the yard signs.
We need a lot of subcommittees and a lot of chairpersons for those.
And although yard signs that announce the date of the vote.
That's all the district would be able to do.
Is all the district can do. So we're looking for community partners that.
Oh, yeah.
That might put up yard signs.
Parent organizations can do things, you know, on their own, sure.
April fifth.
Okay.
Okay.
Good.
All right. Clear?
Good. Thank you all.
Okay, so then I'd like to, we're going to do our budget presentation on, we're going to start with technology.
Yes. So I'd like to invite up Michael Lee to give our 2025-26 technology budget planning presentation. Welcome, Michael. Need any assistance to get it on?
Oh, man, yes. Okay, see, can I? Oh, okay.
I would have said that.
All right. So I'm Mike Lee, Director of Technology. And this is the technology budget presentation, which is different than the program presentation that I gave in November. How it's different is this is where we generally talk about the equipment and supplies that we'd like to buy, like equipment replacement timelines and any staffing changes that we might have. Now, having said that, the quote that I usually like to start off with has nothing to do with budget. But I think it's pretty relevant to sort of like the world that we live in now with relation to AI. It says, "By far, the greatest danger of artificial intelligence is that people conclude too early that they understand it." And why I thought that was relevant was the more that we get used to AI resources, the more that we plug into it and then use its output directly, right? The more comfortable we get with it. And then the more comfortable we get with it, the more we think we understand exactly how it works. And we just have to kind of keep in mind that nobody really understands how it works yet, right? I think I mentioned maybe last time or the time before that AI very much is like Tylenol, right? Everyone takes it. Everyone knows it kind of works. But nobody really understands how it works. Remember? Don't believe me? Go look it up. Nobody knows how Tylenol works. So we should all just keep that in mind.
Okay.
Okay, all right. So now what did we discuss in November? I'm just going to briefly kind of go through everything just to get a nice little baseline here. We spoke about how we've got the BenQ interactive displays in all of the academic spaces in the district. Computer-based testing, we're moving toward full implementation in the spring of 2026. This year, I believe we're doing grades four and six math and ELA, grades five and eight math, ELA, and science. We've got the Future of Education Committee. And what we do is we help guide the district through AI use. We got the new network cores. And last time that I spoke, we installed the elementary school cores. Now we've got the high school and the middle school cores all installed. So that's good. We spoke about security. We're continuing our parallel migration to the new building access control system. And if you recall, we also went over some AI tools. You guys remember that Notebook LM podcast demonstration that we gave? Yeah, so, okay. So that's what we discussed in November. Now, moving forward, this is about infrastructure. This is about like the equipment that we want to get. Why support infrastructure? Well, good infrastructure supports educational experiences for all students, right, for all faculty, everyone. You upgrade the infrastructure, it supports everybody equally. Good infrastructure also enables distance learning, remote access, and computer-based testing. Good infrastructure allows collaboration among students, teachers, and administrators. And good infrastructure also secures and supports a comprehensive district-wide security plan. So now, what does our replacement cycle look like? What is the current status of everything that we had, you know, mapped out over the years? What had we replaced? Okay, so MFD, refresh, refresh. So MFD is all the multi-function devices. What are the multi-function devices? Those are basically like the Xerox machines that copy and also scan and act as printers. So that's done. Some time ago, we talked about storage replacement. That's done. The network cores. I just mentioned that we replaced the cores this year. Okay, that's done. So all checks. What's left? Well, last year I had mentioned that we were going to do some server replacements. Now, we placed someone on hold because we managed to find a warranty coverage for that server hardware through Bosse's. So we have another couple of years on that so we don't need to jump, you know, head-on into that one. We could kind of place that one on hold because we've got coverage for that now. So coming up, what we have is we want to do high school laptop refreshes for two grade levels. That's approximately 250 units. And then, following that, we've got switch, like network switches and wireless access point replacements. So on a timeline, what does that look like?
Yeah. When was the last time you replaced laptops?
Oh, that's a good question. So the last time that we replaced a grade-level set of laptops was in 2020.
Five years ago.
So five years ago. And I think that's actually a testament to how well the students treat our equipment, but also how well our tech department takes care of the equipment. We collect it every summer. We go over, you know, go over everything, update them and clean them up, pass them back out. And the team really does a great job with keeping everything all, you know, working nicely. So, yeah, so if you look at the timeline, here's what we look like. Servers, we could place that on hold. Laptops, that's somewhere of 2025. Switches, we could look at that in somewhere of 2026. And then wireless access points, somewhere of 2027. Now, funding that's available for us to utilize, category-two funding, that's the funding that's available to us to put toward like connectivity updates, right? So we can't apply that to servers. So we can't apply that to laptops. It can only be applied to things like switches and access points. So in 2026, we'll have $273,000 available to us. And we also have the remainder of our Smart Schools bond money, which is $234,000. Now, this is our basic overview of expenses that we have every year. I probably don't need to read through all of it. So there's this, then there's the following page here, right? All kind of like normal stuff. And again, we would like to buy two grade-level sets of laptops, first time since 2020. And we would utilize the Bosse's IPA process that we go through basically every year. Again, for an amount of $285,000. But the budget impact would only be roughly $63,000. And our aid ratio is about 65%. Now staffing. I remember last year, I was really proud of the fact that we didn't have any staffing changes at all since 2018, 19. And this is the first year where we will have, and we have had staffing changes. Now, there's me, or we've got Dan, we've got four district computer specialists. We've got our Bosse's junior computer specialist. But where are the changes, right? Because numbers-wise, this looks pretty much identical to last year. Okay, so there's a name that's different here. You'll notice Connor Poust. We just hired Connor Poust this year to replace Doug Green as our part-time district tech support. And after over 24 years of service to the district, Laura Sherwood will be retiring at the end of the year. So that's where the biggest change is going to be.
And we will be filling her position.
Yep, we will be filling her position, yep.
She will not be replaced?
She is, she will be. We will be.
You will. I was going to say that what she has done for, you know, the middle school and even the entire district is huge, as you know, Michael.
Oh, yeah.
So maybe more accurately, her position will be filled.
That's what I need to say. That's what I mean to say.
She'll never be replaced.
Yes, yes.
Exactly.
Yep, yep.
Good.
Yep, and that's, that's it. That's the team.
All right.
That's our stuff, yeah.
Thank you, Michael.
All right, thank you.
There's real no, there's no real technical change in staffing, correct?
No, no.
Just want to make sure, okay.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
All right.
The warranty.
Next year, we're going to switch to ThinkPads.
You might be replaced by Sophia, no kidding.
The warranty coverage, the server, for the servers, that was a good find, so.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I loved that. When they said, oh, you know, you could, you could get this little server that'll, that'll keep these servers covered. I was like, yes, let's do that. Because it's just, it's just a fraction of the cost of what it would take to purchase new servers and install all that. No, 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 no. It's, I mean, they're running great, they're running fine, so keep them. We get warranty coverage, we're good.
Good, good.
Thank you, Michael.
All right.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you very much. Our next presentation this evening will be our Physical Education, Athletics, and Health Services. I'd like to invite up Rob Webb. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for so patiently waiting.
Good evening. Tonight I will be highlighting the Department of Physical Education, Athletics, and Health Services, and the components that make up our budget in addition to the budget. We're also going to highlight some of the achievements because it's about the students, some ongoing initiatives and our vision for continued success in fostering student athletes who excel both on and off the field. The first part of the presentation is kind of where Mike ended, but we're going to start, and that's with our department staffing. Our department includes one administrator, being myself, one senior office assistant, which is our Office Secretary in Athletics. We have one athletic trainer, eight instructional staff members, which include our six full-time physical education teachers, two at each building, one physical and health education teacher that's split between the middle school and the high school, and then we have one full-time health teacher here at the high school. We also have four school nurses, one in each building, and then we have a floating nurse that fills in when our nurses are out, as well as when they go on field trips and things of that nature. There's no change to any of that staffing. We also oversee all of our coaches in the district. We are adding two coaching positions in the spring. Our fall will remain the same at 26 coaches, winter at 18 coaches. And then the two additions in the spring will be due to the addition of girls varsity flag football, which will be brought into the district. And then we also have one seasonal game day coordinator who works each game during each season. And now there'll be no change to that position either. So to break down our athletic program offerings, starting with the fall. This fall, our athletic programs experienced tremendous success and growth. We had two section champions, we had multiple league champions, one regional, and one state finalist. Next year, we plan to continue the same sport offerings during our fall season. That includes eight varsity programs, one of those being a merger that was approved earlier tonight. That's in the sport of girl swimming. We have five JV offerings and five modified offerings. During our fall, we had approximately 380 students involved in our program this fall, which year to year, that was about a 15% increase from the previous year. So we're seeing good growth within our sports. It's also important to highlight that of our fall programs, six of our varsity programs were recognized as scholar-athlete programs, meaning that collectively their GPA was a 90% or above. So our student athletes continue to excel both in competition and in the classroom, and it demonstrates the positive impact and the well, and how important it is to have a well-supported athletic program. In the winter, which we are currently in right now, just some highlights as we continue. We're very proud to highlight that we had our first female Section One champion as of yesterday, and two of our female student athletes, two of our wrestlers, have qualified for the state championship. So on February 27th, they'll be going to Albany to compete for a state championship at MVP Arena.
Wow.
While we're still in the winter season, we've also had multiple league champions, and postseason play for most of our sports will be getting next week over the break. So even though most people are home, our student athletes will still be here almost every day next week. During the winter, we're also going to keep it like the fall, there's no additions, no changes. We're going to continue with eight varsity programs. Three of our varsity programs are merged, our boys' ice hockey program, girls' ice hockey, and boys' swimming, and then we also have a merger at the modified level, and that's for boys' ice hockey. We'll continue to have four JV programs, as well as five modified programs in the winter. This winter, we have about 300 student athletes involved across all of our sports program, which, like the fall, was an increase. We had a 10% increase in involvement from last year to this year. We also just found out today that each one of our varsity programs is going to qualify to be a scholar-athlete program for the winter. So that means every one of our varsity programs has a collective average of 90, 90 or above.
That's good.
So these accomplishments, accomplishments again reflect the ongoing dedication of our student athletes and our coaches, both in their athletic performance and their academic success. So we're excited for the remainder of the season, and hopefully we continue to have success over the next couple of weeks. Moving on to our spring programs and our spring athletic offerings. As you can see, we have one highlighted in green up there. That is the new program that we will be offering, where we will have the two additional coaches at the varsity level. Other than that, there will be no changes. We'll offer seven varsity programs, three JV programs, and five modified programs. And none of our spring programs are merged, they're all in-house here at Putnam Valley. So last spring, we had approximately 300 student athletes, and we're hoping that we continue the trend to increase participation in our athletic programs. A little shameless plug here, registration for spring sports opens this Saturday, February 15th, for our varsity and JV, and March 1st for our modified programs.
Is flag football for boys and girls, or, you said girls, okay.
Track, track and field?
No, flag football.
Flag football is a girl's sport. So it's a, it's an emerging sport, it's now a state championship sport. It, it's only been around for about three or four years, but where there were zero programs four years ago, we're now up in the high 30s, almost 40 schools across the section that are competing.
I want to give you credit, Coach. Anybody who watched the Super Bowl saw that flag football commercial, where they were, you know, pushing it and saying, let's make this a varsity sport. Well, we're doing that, and congratulations to you and the department for initiating that. I think it's important.
It's a testament to our students because they advocated strong for themselves, and we explored it. And, you know, unfortunately, we're going to be able to make that become a reality for our student athletes.
That's outstanding, thank you.
Where do they play? Where's our, where do we have space for the flag football?
They'll play on our turf field. So it's a, it's a modified field from the actual football field, it's a little narrower. It's 100 yards long with 10 yards of touchdowns and 80 yards of playing field. So we'll manage our space in the spring, and they'll play all of their home games on our turf. And it's very similar to a lacrosse or a soccer schedule where it'll be 16 games. So most years, we'll have eight home and eight away.
Great.
So their timing is actually exceptional because, well, most of the turfs in this region are not lined for girls' flag football, because why would they use the same lines? That would be entirely too easy. So we have separate lines. Because of the timing of our turf, we have the opportunity to actually have those lines built into the new turf that will be installed this summer.
So going more in-depth into the budget, our budget component is really broken into four areas, which includes stipends and hourly workers, which includes our coaching staff and support staff for our games, which includes the chaperones who staff all of our home games. We also have contractual costs, those costs, cover expenses related to coaching, conference, and state dues, as well as reconditioning for our equipment. We send it out each year to ensure that it passes all of the safety inspections. And it also includes events and tournaments that we participate in each year. The third area is Bosse's, which includes our Section One dues, official fees, our Huddle streaming services that we use, and our student athlete registration system. Last on that list, you'll see Final Forms, which is a student athlete registration system. And we'll be moving on from Family ID, hopefully in the fall, to Final Forms. And that just will provide us a few more opportunities that I'll talk about on the next slide. We also have our material and supplies costs, which covers the cost of uniforms, game, and practice equipment, required safety equipment, and anything we would need for our athletic training department, and their materials and their supplies to cover all of those athletic training issues. These components ensure that our athletic programs are properly supported, while also ensuring safety, quality, and growth in our student athletes. So our budget goals, when we build out our budget, our goals are related to opportunity, equity, safety, and sustainability. We want to provide programs that promote student well-being and develop, and ensure that we meet the diverse needs of all of our students. We want to ensure equitable access to the resources that our department has and opportunities across all programs, so that our programs receive the necessary support. Safety, we're going to continue to prioritize adequate and safe equipment, as well as safe facilities to protect the health and well-being of our student athletes. And finally, we want to utilize our resources in a way that maximize impact and ensure long-term sustainability, helping our programs thrive well into the future. So anticipated expenses. When we look at the anticipated expenses, these are the areas where we, where we might see a slight increase in the upcoming budget. Our coaching stipends, which are in line with the Putnam Valley Teachers Contract, those, those coaching stipends are going to increase slightly year to year. We have dues and official fees, which all come through Bosse's in Section One. Those fees are all going to increase, and that affects every member school in Section One. Materials and supplies, we anticipate that there's going to be a continued increase as we see in everyday items for our equipment, supplies, uniforms, and our safety gear. And then Final Forms, which we're moving on to as an enhanced student athlete registration system, but it also does a lot more than that. So it will do our student athlete registration, just as Family ID does now. But it also tracks our coaching certification, it serves as a communication platform between coaches and our families. If our coaches use it for attendance, it's an automatic email to the parent. And it also features an inventory management system, so we'll be able to track all of our inventory. When we hand out a uniform to a student, it's automatically assigned to a student. So at the end of the season, we know exactly who has what uniform and when it comes back to us.
Awesome.
So anticipated savings. When we look at savings, there are a few areas. One, we talk about materials and supplies, and that's Final Forms. Having that inventory system, being able to track our athletic inventory, we're going to have real-time data, which is going to enable us to eliminate redundant unnecessary expenses and improve our efficiency in managing the department as a whole. We're also going to continue to utilize state contracted vendors for our best prices, our materials and supplies, and new to our district, we now have access to EdData for purchasing. So that's also going to allow us to get state bid items and get the lowest-cost items for all of the things that we buy. So these initiatives are going to help us maximize the impact of our budget by reducing unnecessary costs while maintaining the quality of our athletic programs. Boosters and fundraising. We're very fortunate to have multiple avenues that help offset the costs to our families and to our district, ensuring that our athletic program remains sustainable and impactful. Our teams work closely with the Booster Club, our coaches work closely with the Booster Club, and they engage in yearly fundraising efforts. We also have tournaments each year. We had, we had a wrestling tournament that was a great success, we had 12 other districts here. Cheerleading held two tournaments this year, one in the fall where we had almost 30 different teams participate, and then another one in the winter with over 20, and those are, those are great fundraisers. Enough so, as an example, that our cheerleading program raised enough funds to compete at Nationals in Florida just last week. There was no cost to the family, no cost to the district. That was their travel, their hotel, their food, their entrance fee, everything. So all their hard work paid off through fundraising, and there was no cost to the district or their families. We also operate a superstore for team and school apparel, and all of those fundraising proceeds go directly back into our teams. So if they need something additional that's outside of the budget, all of those fundraising things help, help us to get those things for our student athletes.
Coach, any idea when the spring superstore will be open?
We're, we're looking right now, we're finalizing it hopefully next week or the week after. We're going to, we're going to open it for, for a clip until March 1st.
Okay.
So that anybody that participates in a spring sport will be able to have it when the season starts. And then we're going to open it again on the first day of tryouts for people that aren't sure if they're going to play, so that once they do make a team, they'll have an opportunity to still order it. It'll just come during the season as opposed to before the season.
Outstanding, thank you.
So these efforts play a crucial role in offsetting costs and ensuring that our athletic programs can continue to thrive while keeping costs manageable for our families as well as the district. And the last thing I wanted to highlight, while it's really outside of our budget, and it was something that was covered in the last board presentation, curriculum, and professional development, I've been working closely with our Director of Curriculum to ensure that we're providing the best and most comprehensive education in our physical and health education classrooms. Right now, we're currently piloting in our middle and high school physical education classes a program called Platform, which is designed to enhance fitness education, but also to improve student engagement. So our phys ed teachers had a professional development on their last professional development day, and they're also starting to utilize that in their, in their classroom as well. And then we're also exploring a new K-12 curriculum called Health Smart with our health teachers. They're reviewing it right now, and that's a skills-based health education program that empowers our students to think, choose, and act in healthy ways. And finally, professional development. I continue to work with our Director of Curriculum for professional development opportunities that are meaningful and specific to our physical and health education teachers. So we're going to continue to look for opportunities that are specific to phys ed and health for next, next school year.
And both of those curricula would be covered in the budget for curriculum and instruction?
Correct, yes, and all things that we've already explored going into next year.
And I know it's easy to focus on high school and middle school as a feeder, but I like that you're going to bring the health to the, you know, starting in kindergarten. I think that that's really key, so, you know, I'm glad to see that in your budget.
And the program platform that we're exploring for middle and high school right now doesn't offer an elementary curriculum, but by the fall of '25, they're, they're going to be coming out with an elementary curriculum.
Nice.
So we wanted to explore the program first to see if it met the needs of our students before we move forward with it, but it could. And it's also in Bosse's, so it's AIDable and all of that. You know, we benefit from that too when it goes through Bosse's.
Nice.
That's great.
Good work, yeah.
So that's all I have for you. Thank you.
That's excellent.
Thank you. I do have a question, but it's not budget-related.
Sure.
I was asked, I want to confirm that the middle school students are using the Wellness Center.
They are, they are using it for physical education. So they have been coming over throughout the winter because they like to get outside. But, you know, unfortunately, we have a lot of snow out there and ice, so they, they have made way over, and they coordinate with our high school physical education teachers to make sure that they can work around each other and both programs get to use the Wellness Center.
How about any classrooms, any class?
There, there have been some teachers, not specific to the middle school for me, but I know the high school teachers reach out regularly to see if they can use it. A lot of our science studies, they try to do experiments in there when, just to have the space that they may not have in the classroom, so they've worked with our physical education teachers to use the Wellness Center as well.
Okay. Because the question I, I received was the classrooms, classroom work in the Wellness Center, so.
Yep. We're, we're open to exploring any ideas, so if they reach out and they need access, we can definitely be creative with our scheduling.
Happy to hear that, thank you. Great job, thank you.
Coach, what day is the Wall of Honor, you know, where you present all the scholar-athletes?
So the.
It's in June?
Yes, right now it's targeted at June 18th.
June 18th.
Because we don't have school on the 19th, and June gets really tight with all the events. So it was an opportunity where kids didn't have a regents the next day or school, so we, we hope to get really good turnout, so June 18th is the date for that.
Good, thank you.
So I just want to say that all three of my kids love physical education in this district, and for a ninth-grade girl to love physical education, that's like a really amazing accomplishment. So great work there. My kids look forward to going to PE, and, and so that's really exciting. I love that we're moving to Final Forms, that's going to be a huge help, where we keep everything in one place. I mean, students' physical, like, all the information just goes in one place. I think that's really helpful for parents. And the communication platform on Final Forms is excellent, so I'm super excited about that. Question for you, how are students in the middle school? For example, sixth moving into seventh, how are they informed about the modified sports that they are able to do?
So I have a plan for the spring to work with Mr. McCarty to schedule some sort of assembly with our sixth and seventh graders.
Okay.
To inform them, and also give them a handout to bring home to their families. We're also going to try to just improve the communication any way we can. We try to get it out through the ConnectEd, we use the email. There'll be one going out tomorrow for the high school, one the day before for the middle school. So we'll try multiple platforms so they have that information, because with our, with our fall sports especially, we're, we're starting before we're back in school. So we want to make sure we get that information out. So for sixth grade, it's really important. The pro to Final Forms is one click, you can mass email. So after we have an established database, in the future, we can use that as another means of communication. And another pro to it, and one thing that we are going to utilize, is you can use a text option through there as well. So the parents can get all the information as a text too, if they prefer that over an email.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Fantastic job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we're going back to new business. Aiden, did you have anything to say on either of the presentations, technology, or athletics?
Any of your students?
Okay, all right. I just didn't, I didn't want to not give you an opportunity to speak if you had an opinion.
No, I think everybody's doing a great job.
I like to hear that, good, good.
Good.
Like seasoned politician or anything.
Okay, we're up to number three, and I think Sasha, you're going to read number three?
Whereas Carrie Burdette has been previously tenured as a teacher in a New York public school district or Bosse's, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education hereby appoints Carrie Burdette to a three-year probationary term as a reading and literacy teacher commencing on September 1st, 2025, and terminating on August 31st, 2028, in the tenure area of reading and literacy at the elementary school on Step 25 of the PVFT salary schedule. Ms. Burdette holds pre-K, K, 1 through 6, reading, and special education permanent certifications.
Second, questions or comments?
I just want to clarify that Ms. Burdette has been a teacher here in Putnam Valley for the last 28 years. And she's very excited to be making this move into a new position within our elementary school. So we thank her for her willingness to try something new.
Excellent.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? The resolution passes, number four, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the termination of employment of elementary school monitor Lisa Jennings from the district effective February 6th, 2025.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number five, please.
Resolved to accept the results of the Capital Project vote held on January 28th, 2025. Yes, 625; no votes, 667.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number six, please.
Resolved to set the following dates for action regarding the 2025-26 district budget vote and board election. May 6, 2025, final budget hearing, 7 o'clock PM at the high school cafeteria. May 20th, 2025, budget vote and board election at the elementary school from 6 AM to 9 o'clock PM.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number seven, please.
Resolved to authorize clerk of the district to arrange and enter into contracts for all voting needs, including voter check-in, poll book systems, to have the necessary ballots printed, and to make other arrangements for the district budget vote and board election scheduled for May 20th, 2025, as are necessary and appropriate. This resolution shall take effect immediately.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes.
Dr. Luft, just a bit of clarification on number six. We're approving just the budget and the board election at this point in time. We would need another resolution if we add the bond, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
There would be a separate resolution to move the bond onto that same date.
I just, I don't want people leaving saying, "Oh, look, they approved the bond vote tonight."
Good point.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Just budget and board.
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to open it up for public comments on any topic?
Help me, somebody?
Good evening. My name is Karen Carroll. I am the proud parent of two sons, one who has graduated from the school district in '22, and a proud parent of a current senior. You have talked about a number of the things this evening that I wanted to address, but I thought it was important that first and foremost, you see the face of someone who just emailed you this week, so I wanted to make that connection with you as a parent and a supporter of the school district. The first thing I wanted to just touch on very briefly was the bond vote. I implore you to think about multimodal communication. You mentioned something about video and that the Facilities Committee had done a walkthrough. I would ask you to take a video of another walkthrough and put that out for people who can't participate in the Facilities Committee. I agree with you, the Facilities Committee opportunity was afforded to everyone. I did not pursue it because I couldn't make the time commitment, but respect those that did. I would just say that in terms of communication, in terms of, you know, grabbing people in different ways, that may be one of the things. I don't know what the gym looks like. I don't know what the dance, IB dance class would need, for example. So seeing a video of that would be helpful to me because I can't get here during the day. So just a thought. Part of the bond vote, I think, really does speak to trust and the trust that the residents of Putnam Valley have and the students, and I'm going to get back to that in a moment. I also emailed you about graduation. I'm one of those parents who am passionate about the fact that the graduation should be outside, appreciate that acts of, you know, an act of God can't be changed in terms of rain, and we understand that two years recently it's been inside, and understand that. But there's something to be said for it being outside. And I implore you, as I said to you in an email this week, to really strongly consider, I appreciate the partnership that you're willing to give the parents that want to come forth and talk to you about it, but I do want to push back a little bit respectfully and say, it's really up to you as the leadership to come up with an alternative as well, okay? I think we've come up with some, but I really would hope that this leadership team also come up with some. That's all I'm going to say about graduation. I think enough has been said, and there's more to be said. And if that meeting is going to happen, Dr. Luft, I would ask that that information be put out so some folks can join. I am most concerned this week about the breach in security. Let's call it what it is. I will give you my background. I am a longtime nurse, nursing administrator, and healthcare administrator. Healthcare and education have a tremendous amount of crossover in terms of policy, procedure, and communication. Having said that, in healthcare, when we have a one-off, when we have an event that affects a patient or a family, we conduct what's called a root cause analysis. It's not unique to healthcare. It's done in many industries. What I would ask is that when you conduct your investigation into this event, that the findings and the opportunities for improvement are put out there for all to read, absorb, and ask questions about. And I say that, and I'm going to turn right back around to trust, because that information, that level of transparency will only continue to build trust. So that is something that I would ask as a parent who also chose to move to this district for my children, and quite honestly, I have a younger son who's anticipated to go into adolescent education, so I would hope that he has that same partnership with parents that I'm hoping to have with you and others. And transparency, I think, while I know the school district is transparent, not all believe it to be, and I think that this is just another mechanism by which we can get that information out there. I am tremendously upset this week about what happened with this student entering the building. And while we are fortunate that nothing, in fact, untoward happened, we are lucky that nothing untoward happened. And I say that as a person who worked in the Bronx when a hospital, in fact, was part of a violent episode where gunshots went off. So I say this as a parent, I say this as a nurse, and I say this as a resident to say, let's do a little bit more around security, let's understand what happened, and be transparent with the findings, so that that only builds trust and collaboration with the parents. Thank you for your time and the opportunity.
Thank you.
Oh, and by the way, I want to plug, as a baseball parent, when we talk about improvements, can we give a little love to the baseball field? That's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
So...
I'd give a little love to baseball.
Dave, you write that down?
Yes, please.
So, I appreciate you coming and your thoughts. I do want to say we're happy to share it. We've already made changes. We've had our sort of our after-action debrief meeting, and we've met with both transportation, right? So that was sort of the initial failure here, was allowing the individual onto the bus. And we've actually changed our internal procedures regarding how those students re-entered the building, so we're better able to supervise. Remember, this isn't one kid getting on a bus, right? This is 20 kids boarding a bus, hand in hand, talking to each other, so it's not a stranger, and then 20 kids coming into the building at the same time. So we have made those two changes already to ensure that something like this doesn't happen again, and we'd be happy to share as much of that information as we can. I didn't want you to think that it wasn't our first thought, right? It was to do exactly that, to figure out what happened and how we could prevent it from happening again. Thank you.
I just want to thank you for coming. Where'd you go? Hi. I just wanted to thank you for coming. I applaud you so much for your level of thoughtfulness. As a parent, I, too, have a concern about graduation. My baby will be walking across that field, hopefully, in three years, and it is a moment that truly I have thought about since the moment she was born. And so when you have an idea of a tradition, of something that's supposed to happen, and you feel like that's been taken from you with, like, another alternative perhaps, I just want you to know that I resonate with that same feeling and that it is a concern for us as well. So we're going to do everything that we can to partner with parents to figure out what the best solution is moving forward. I also want to say that this has been a really eventful year for Putnam Valley, and I think that there's starting to be some event fatigue in our community. You know, and I really say that with all seriousness. We're a small little dot on a map, and we've had a lot of stuff happen this year that involve our kids, that involve the doors of our school, and I don't know what can be done. I said this the last time we had this conversation, but I do think we need to consider just continuing to come around the table to figure it out, because our kids need to be safe. Like, that's number one. Our kids need to be safe. And I'm not saying that the district can do any more than it's already doing, aside from put, you know, metal detectors, which nobody wants at a door, right? But the conversation needs to continue, and I agree with you, trust is currently an issue in our community for some people, and I think that whatever we can do as a district to regain that trust and to build that partnership, we are willing to do. I would hope that on the other side of that conversation, there would be a willingness to do that as well, because it does take two sides. So I just want to thank you so much for coming out tonight, because that's what we're asking parents to do, is to come here and say your thoughts, ask your questions, as opposed to going to other places for information or for sharing thoughts. So thank you so much again for coming.
Shana Siegel. I am a parent in the district. I'm also a nurse as well and a public health educator. Many of you know me from my role. I wanted to say that I was on the Facilities Committee, and in the work that I do, not to get too into it, but I do oversee a lot of programs, and we do a lot of prioritization of health problems that affect different communities and interventions that we need to do, and almost always, the priorities that we're looking at are all vital, and we still have to prioritize them. And we make decisions based on feasibility and impact and sustainability. And I have to say that when I showed up at the Facilities Committee meetings, I really didn't know what that process was going to be like here. And I can be a pretty harsh critic. I was blown away by the process. And yes, I think videoing the walkthroughs would be impactful, maybe. I know nothing about videography. To me, walking through all of the buildings and the properties was a lot that maybe wouldn't really be captured on video, but the process itself really is something that people should get to experience. So with this very long list of possibilities, lots of people, dozens of people got together and were brainstorming and asking all different kinds of questions, and they were prioritized, and it was very, very hard to prioritize. And I just, I want to commend the district and all of the folks that volunteered their time in that process, because I think that what we came up with is something that we can stand behind, but if there is feedback about how to hone that down even more to prioritize further, I hear from everyone in the district and people on the committee that we're open to hearing that. But when you were so involved in the process and you already feel like you've trimmed down so much, it's sort of hard to see it. So we do need some voices, and I want to just echo what Crystal brought up before. I do a lot of communications in my job, too. It was news to me, just unfortunately, until the bond vote did not pass, of really how restricted the district is in what they're able to communicate, because I had a lot of questions about it, too. So I do think it's on the Facilities Committee, it's on stakeholders, like all of us, the rest of the community, to form some of these groups that can go out and educate, and I'm willing to be a part of it, but I think it has to be diverse voices, diverse voices, but not diverse messaging, right? So the message is clear, there are facts, and that's what has to be presented to people, but we do have to make it accessible. So any ideas that we can do there? I think community organizations are a big piece of it, but a lot of it is really just person-to-person. So, thank you.
Thanks, Shana.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I would just like to say, in regards to graduation, I've talked to a lot of seniors, and unanimously, everybody wants to have it outside. So I think it's great you're talking with the parents and getting their insight, but it's also, from a student perspective, all the students are agreeing with the parents that they want it outside, and yes, I just keep everybody aware that that's still what the students would want.
Thank you for letting us know.
And we're, I'm speaking for district office, and I really shouldn't, but the board certainly is aware that that's an ideal. But like Mr. O pointed out, in the 20 years that we've had graduations, 10 of them have not been on the field.
Right.
So half have not been on the field for one reason or another.
Weather mainly.
Weather mainly.
Weather, and then the pandemic.
And I agree that leadership, that it doesn't just fall to parents or students to solve this problem. But leadership also forces us to look at all of the component parts, in a kind of unbiased way, try to find the best solution that we can. I've seen a list of the different, what other options do we have, and each of them has a domino effect on others.
Right.
So leadership also forces us to take a stand sometimes that doesn't make this group happy, but if we made this decision, this group wouldn't be happy. So it can be very tricky, is all I'm saying. And I don't want you to think that the board and the administrative team has not seriously looked at the best solutions, or all the solutions, or possible solutions. I think we could look at more. I mean, I'm willing, we're willing to hear more, and we do understand what the parents and students desire.
I think, too, it's about the transparency piece. I don't think the community necessarily, if they're perhaps not involved in secondary education on a regular basis, would understand the timelines involved, or the impacts on future graduating classes, or the impact on the football season, or the impact on whoever else is using that field, or the track of being available for the community, or, like, all of the pieces that are going into this conversation. I think whatever decision is arrived to would be easily, more easily understood if it were explained to the public, as far as the process goes, as to how we arrived to this decision, right? It can't just be, we're not having graduation outside this year, right? So I think the more we can talk about options and the reasoning for the decisions that are needed to be made, because you're right, sometimes there's not a perfect decision, and someone's going to get the short end of the stick, so that multiple generations have what they need going forward. I think all of it just needs to be talked about with the community, that's all, so that they have an understanding of all the implications.
And, you know, I see the tough position you're in. I truly, I see both sides of the argument of, okay, we have graduation outside, now this gets pushed back, so I understand where you're coming, I understand where you're coming from, and I see the tough position. I just wanted to let you know.
And I appreciate it, Aiden, and I really, I do.
That's why you're here, to guide us.
And it breaks our hearts to be able to not say, sure, okay, we can fix that.
No, I just want to...
Like, I'd love to be able to say I could fix it. I haven't figured out a way to fix it yet.
Can we involve students in that conversation? Is there a way to do that when you have that meeting?
There's already student groups in existence, so I could certainly ask Mr. Mello to have that conversation with the students.
Great. I think it's important to have their voice heard.
And we appreciate what you said.
Yeah, we do.
Again, that's why you're here. You've got to help us.
I understand your side, too. I understand, I see all, both sides of this one.
Thank you.
Topics for upcoming meetings, more budget presentations?
That it is. So our next meeting is scheduled for February 27th, and we'll have two presentations, our facilities and special education presentations. The meeting after that will be March 13th, and that'll be the first time we do our full budget presentation, which is then repeated over and over again.
The facilities is not... The facilities is not for the facilities bond, it's for just the regular budget?
No, sorry. Facilities, operations, and transportation.
Okay, all right.
The infamous Mr. Spittle.
Okay. We might have.
We'll make him wear his hat when he does it.
I also just want to say that I don't think at any moment tonight, we have thanked Mr. Spittle for all of the work that he also did with this bond, so thank you. We appreciate you.
Yeah.
You are, I say it every year, and I'm going to say it again, you are a gift to this community. Thank you so much for all you do.
And we're going to get you on tape doing your little, this is the history.
Next meeting.
Next meeting. Get ready for the camera.
Next meeting. That's it.
Okay. Board member comments? Anything else?
No. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Did you say no?
No.
Okay. I have a couple things.
A week I don't have any.
A few of us were able to attend the ELA night at the elementary school.
Yes.
There was a wonderful turnout, and it was just a wonderful evening, so thank you to all the parents and students and the staff members that were involved in that. It was, overall, a great evening. I had an opportunity this week to attend Jim Bruno's Flight School at the elementary school. That was a lot of fun, so thank you, Ms. Bruno, for inviting us, and...
Did you enjoy that?
I did enjoy it. I'm sorry that you had to leave for Dr. Luft. He's had to go to high school to take care of the incident, so, but it was lovely.
We're going to do it again after break, so...
So, yeah. It was, I highly encourage you to attend. It's really cute to watch. PTA Pocketbook Bingo's going on in a few weeks, so just a head advertisement for that. And I just want to, again, note the exemptions that are allowed through the school district for the first responders, seniors, and veterans for your taxes. So the deadline is coming up in a few weeks, probably about six weeks or so. I forget the specific date, but I know I'm working with my father-in-law for Yorktown, so I wanted to make sure that I clarify that. It's filling out the forms. It's not hard to fill out, just you need to have that information. So please, if you're a senior, a veteran, or first responder, please look into that.
And they need to do that at town hall, though, correctly.
Correct.
Yeah, with the clerk.
Thank you for that information.